West Miami is a nice area. You were in a great place. You were in a great place.
Do I hear the coordinates?
It's a good location. Perfectly situated.
Okay, folks, we're on the air, so let's let's call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone, to the City of West Miami Regular Commission Meeting. Today is Wednesday, November 17, 2021, and it is 7:35 PM. This evening, we're going to have our city clerk, Eric Gonzalez, for the invocation. Please, everyone, rise.
Please rise. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. As Thanksgiving Day approaches, we thank you for each and everyone who is here today. We thank you for the freedom to pray these words without fear, in any language, in any faith, in this great country. We thank you for your life, health, friends, and family. We thank you for this day and its blessings, and help us to work together and encourage each other to excellence. We ask all this in your name.
Amen. Thank you. Officer Alvarez, will you lead us in the pledge this evening, sir, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Yes, Madam Mayor, roll call. Mayor Ronda Rodriguez.
Present.
Vice Mayor Eric Diaz-Padrón.
Here.
Commissioner Candy Dablanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Juan Blanes.
Here.
Commissioner Luciana Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor, you have call.
Thank you. Next item.
Yes, Madam Mayor, item for presentation of minutes for approval for November 3, 2021, Charter Review Board meeting.
Need a motion?
Motion. Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, I'm not voting because I wasn't present for that meeting.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Presentation of minutes for approval for November 3, 2021, Regular Commission Meeting.
Need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Same, Madam Clerk, minus myself, since I wasn't present. Madam Clerk, at this time, I have a few items I would like to take out of order. We have our Neighborhood Resource Officer, who has worked all day. He's got to be back here quite early tomorrow morning, so I'd like to take... Let me find him on the agenda here. Here we go. Item 10B. I'd like to take that now. After 10B, I would like to take the presentat... Where are we? The presentation to... Of the plaque to Lenny, our Charter Review Board member, next. Trying to find her on here. Here we go.
Yes, I see it. 11B.
Exactly. 11B. And then, I would like to take next the LAGOM presentation. So let... Next will be...
11F?
11...
F and G?
Yes, but there was one more. Your report needs to go there, too.
E, F, and G.
There we go. E, F, and G. Perfect. And then, the next one would be our mitigation.
Number six. Items 11C and D.
There we go. And that's it for out of order.
Yes, so item 10B is a status report by the Office of the Chief of Police in reference to parking surrounding the buildings along the commercial corridor, citations issued, crime stats for each building, and report of interactions by the NRO by Chief Abila.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, and Madam Manager. So, I'll report first on the issue of the parking issues going on on 63 and 9th Street. There was a total of 479 violations written in the city for the third quarter. 276 of them were in the area between 62nd and 9th Street and 64th and 9th Street. All of them related to the building. The people are... Have learned. Pain causes cooperation, if you will. I guess the pain in the pocket, they're understanding. They're not obstructing driveways as much as before. As a matter of fact, the tickets on 9th Street for the third quarter went down substantially. I'll talk about the building issues in reference to the stats. So, for the third quarter, the stats went up in all the buildings, except for the building on 57th Avenue. And they went up, and from where we stand, looking at it, the third quarter began in July. Sometime in the middle of June was when we had the spike in COVID. So, a lot of people had gone back to work, and then, all of a sudden, they're not working again. A lot more people at the buildings all day long, and that causes, obviously, the uptick in calls. We had 38 calls at 2001, 45 calls at 2101, 35 calls at 2201, 13 calls at 6290 Southwest 8th Street. It's the same building, but it has two separate addresses, and then, we had 45 calls. The calls for service at 6320 went up substantially. We're blaming that on a change there was in management. There's a new management company there, and they're not really paying too much attention to what's going on inside. So, a lot of the calls that we've gotten there were administrative issues. We had to explain to them again. This is something that you need to take care of with the building, not with the police department. But the new management company is not doing very well there. And then, we had 21 calls.
Chief, this is on 8th Street, 6320, 8th Street.
6320 and 6290, it's the same building.
Okay.
But it's two separate addresses. And when we get calls there, we get calls to the separate addresses.
Okay.
Okay? And then, at 950 57th Avenue, we had 21 calls, which in three months is basically nothing. I mean, we did okay there. The NRO has been meeting with the people from the buildings, the management from the buildings. He... And he's here, and he can go ahead and report on how things went for the third quarter.
Okay. Officer Alvarez, thank you for being here.
Thank you very much. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner. There has been a positive response to the meetings. The last meeting, I didn't... We didn't have one last month because of the fire, and I was out on leave. But the meeting before that was our highest volume of participants, which morale has gone up. Their retention numbers have also gone up. People are a little happier in the building, and crime has gone up and down. But we're getting a positive response from the meeting. We're going to actually have our next one tomorrow, which is also a Thanksgiving one, so we'll see what it's like tomorrow, and we'll report back in the next quarter. But so far, it's been pretty positive. Every meeting has gotten better. The last meeting we had was the highest attendees.
That's good.
Yeah. Less complaints about the police department, more internal... We're having the same things with the dogs and things that are management issues, not crime.
Well, that's good.
Yeah.
If there's a good side to it, that would be it.
Yeah, so we're getting a positive feedback from that. And that's primarily the District West, which is the little detail that I'm in charge of having. That's primarily what we're reporting on.
Good, so the... You're... You know, the program, the little detail, the NRO, it's working well. It's helping the residents and, you know, seeing you out there a lot is...
They're retaining a lot of the good residents.
Very good. And I know now that evictions are back in place, right?
Evictions are still in play. Yeah, they're coming in slowly, but they are still... They are still having evictions quite often.
Okay. So, it's all good news. Any questions from the table for the officer?
No, congratulate him.
Thank you, sir, for all you've done. Tremendous work, you know, great program, chief, so it's good. It's all good. It's going in the right direction, which is good. Anything you need from us, as you know, just, you know, ask, and we're there to support you. Great job, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
At the buildings on 67th Avenue, there was two fires during that quarter, during the third quarter. There was evacuations in both instances, but there actually were fires. And we have not received any more complaints about that, the alarm going off. Plus, the alarm system at the three buildings on 67th Avenue were recertified by code enforcement. They actually had them go ahead, and they had to pay and get them recertified, and my understanding is they're up to par now.
So, it seems like that might have taken care of the problem.
Yes, and some recent issues with loud music. That was also taken care of by code enforcement, because the way the last call came in, we obviously couldn't make an arrest because the person wouldn't open the door, and we can't break a door down for a misdemeanor, loud music. So, we went ahead and issued it to code enforcement. Code enforcement, again, took care of it. They went ahead and defined the... Actually, they find the building. The building then goes ahead and finds or tells them if it happens again, they're going to get evicted.
That works. That works. So, good.
As far as that's concerned, they took care of that.
Thank you, code enforcement. Thank you, chief. Great job, once again, as always. Thank you for the report. Madam Clerk, next item is...
Yes, item 11B is a presentation of recognition to the members of the Charter Review Board 2021. The Charter Review Board members 2021 are Lenny Caravia, Ivan Chavez Senior, Ivan Chavez Junior, Christian Diaz, Nardo Demilian, Eduardo Mujina, and Martín Torres.
Madam Clerk, Mrs. Caravia is here tonight, so we'll present hers and the other ones. If you'd like to make contact with the members, I'll be happy to take it personally to them if they can't be here. Or if they wish to come here, we'll reschedule for them. Otherwise, I'll be happy to take it to them. So, let me know. Okay. Mrs. Caravia, if you'll come forward. Let's...
With your presentation, if my colleagues could come forward. Wonderful. Come forward. Commissioner, I believe Lenny was a score nomination. Let your present this to Lenny Caravia for her participation.
Good evening. We're very happy that we did recognition to you. But this is a tribute presented to Lenny Caravia in recognition of your outstanding service to the Charter Review Board 2021, and in recognition of your commitment to improving the quality of life in the city of West Miami and its citizens. With all our gratitude, these 17 days of November 2021, Mayor Ronda Rodriguez, Mayor Diaz-Padrón, Mayor Juan Blanes, Commissioner Candy Dablanca, Commissioner Luciana Suarez, Commissioner... We're very happy and really appreciate that.
Thank you so much. What we set out to do. And we did. It was very productive. And I believe this was your second Charter Review Board. No, it's my first. It was my first. You know, we have you before, why do I think?
Well, I don't know.
Wow. Oh, no, well, gussy. We always have boards, and yes, you're absolutely welcome. We love having you, and thank you for taking the time with your family to be with us, but I do feel that it was a very productive, very successful presentation. We have a limit for you to go forward, so thank you for having me. It was a special working with all of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and thank you for all.
Thank you, Lenny.
Thank you for your time ago.
Thank you. Keep enjoying your time with that beautiful grandbaby.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Hey, Madam Clerk, next item.
This item. Item 11E, report by the Office of the City Manager in reference to amendment to the City of West Miami employee policies and procedures manual to include opinion from the Miami-Dade County Commission on Ethics and Public Trust and disclosure to the pro bono services by City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Commission. Good evening. I issued on November 8 a written report. It was in draft form as of tonight. I went ahead and I formalized it into a permanent report. The memorandum basically is a... Shall serve to advise you that the City of West Miami must update the city's rules and regulations, and it's something that we should have done quite some time ago, but as everything, we've always had put other priorities in place. But now, our policy manual, which was adopted in November of 1982, must be revamped so that we can meet with the... We can meet the requirements of all of our grant partners and the Alliance for Aging that has written us up on several locations for not updating our personnel manual. And the, like I said, the city's personnel rules and regulation require updates from time to time as part of our grant requirements and funding to ensure our agency complies with processes that include policies at local, state, and federal levels. And those policies are in place not only to protect the city, but as well, it provides employees protection and establishes reasonable guidelines by defining benefits and establishing a human resources employee manual, our bible, if you would, that includes a process for best practices when we're dealing with personnel policies. So, in a conversation quite some time ago with my daughter, who's an HR professional, she says, you know what, I'd like to help you out with that. And of course, we started discussing the needs, and I shared the employee manual with my daughter, who's a credentialed professional human resources consultant with over 12 years experience in the field. She holds a master's degree in public administration with a concentration in human resources and is a senior HR management certificate professional, which is the highest certificate you can obtain, which is recognized by state, our state university. So, she says, you know, I will be happy to take this on as a pro bono, something to give back to the city without it costing the city anything. And as you know, Yolanda Junior is a lifelong... She was born in West Miami, lifelong resident, and I guess it was her time to give back to her community. I discussed with the city man... With the city attorney, the opportunity that my daughter had presented to us, and so, Mr. Villalobos requested or suggested that we contact the Miami-Dade County Commission on Ethics to make sure that there would be no ethical conflict of interest or anything, you know, that would preclude us from moving forward and doing the revamping of the employee manual. Mr. Villalobos, as well, I requested that he provide us with a legal opinion on the legal sufficiency of the document and to make sure that we were not, you know, that I was not... By trying to help the city, I would not hurt the city. So, all these things, in conjunction with the work in progress that had already started between Yolanda Menegazo, my daughter, Anari, the city clerk, Juan Pena, and my office, we basically came together on several occasions and reviewed a manual that I think it's an excellent document that the city should pursue at this moment in time. And so, I provided you with a copy of the Ethics Commission opinion, as well as Mr. Villalobos's report on the issue, and our recommendation this evening, and I have to say ours, because the city clerk and Mr. Pena, the Director of Public Services, have been equally involved in the process of creating, if you would, or giving some parameters to Yolanda so that Yolanda can create a document. I think it's time that we move on and that we go ahead and adopt the personnel rules and regulations, and that should be done as soon as possible. That being said, we have attached a copy of the Ethics Opinion issued by Jose Arrojos and the documentation back and forth, as well as the opinion of the city attorney. That concludes my recommendation, my presentation, and I would urge you to hear from Yolanda Menegazo this evening, because she is the expert in the field, and to explain to you why we should have this manual in place and why it should be revamped, so it doesn't only come from us.
So... Item F, please.
Yes, item 11F, presentation of proposed City of West Miami employee policies and procedures manual by LAGOM HR by Yolanda Menegazo.
Welcome.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, Commissioners, thank you very much for having me and for this opportunity.
Name and address, please.
Yolanda Menegazo, 910 Southwest 62nd Avenue, only for the next two weeks, and then, I'm out of town.
Don't say that. Don't make your mother cry just yet.
I know, she will. Only 15 minutes away. So, I have been conducting human resources consulting for almost four years now. In January, it'll be almost four years, and I have... I have basically conducted and implemented handbooks for different municipalities, just to name a few. City of Doral, Bow Harbor Village, Bay Harbor Islands, Biscayne Park, Golden Beach, and all of these handbooks have been very, very successful implementations, and you shouldn't feel too bad. A lot of these cities also had very outdated handbooks, right? And so, what my job is, is to incorporate the old with the new, right? So, I incorporate all of your existing code of conduct and code of ethics, but I also implement best practices, right? And it's pretty difficult nowadays because you have technology and social media that are spilling into the workplace. So, what I did as part of this handbook is make sure that the language is there for the employees to understand, that they represent the City of West Miami when they are working and even outside of work, and how they have to maintain that code of conduct and code of ethics at all times, right? Because they're always a representation of the city that they work for. So, I also put in there all of the amazing benefits that you offer to your employees, because this is supposed to be a guide for them. They understand their rights that they have and the different resources that they have to resolve problems, and who they can go to and who they can speak to. And then, it's also a guide for management, to understand how they can hold their employees accountable. So, that's a summary of the handbook. This is supposed to be a living, breathing document. This is something that, over the years, you will continue to clarify certain policies and add certain policies, and maybe add new benefits to it. But everything that you have in this handbook are things that I have implemented in other cities, both large and small, that are best practices of human resources. I would say HR, like globally, but very specific to local government, which is what I focus on. Does anybody have any questions for me?
I do. You did say this is a living, breathing document, so how often do you think, going forward, this should be updated?
So, things are going to happen in the workplace that you're going to want to say, you know what, I'd like very specific language on this, so that this doesn't happen to us in the future. And the good thing is that this handbook has a lot of discretion for the things that you just don't have a policy for, right? Because sometimes, these things happen in the workplace, and so, your city manager has discretion on how to deal with certain things. But when these things come up, you can implement it, and you can roll it out, and you basically can implement and update this as often as you want. But if you don't... If you wanted to conduct a formal review of your employee handbook to see what you can update and improve, because you can always make improvements to it, I would say at least every two years would be a good timeframe, just because of the way that, you know, so many things are different in today's society, and so many different resources you can offer to your employees, and you should be able to showcase that in your employee handbook.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mrs. Menegazo?
Well, I think I have a simple question. I think this is something that is... It's not that we are enforced to have it, but most of the city should have something like this, right?
Correct.
We did not have until now.
You did have a handbook.
It was very simple and very old and was not up to date. Now, you put up to date with a new real federal things, and...
That's correct.
So, I think it's a great thing, and I appreciate that you make a pro bono work for this. But also, I think you grew up in West Miami, so part of this work is the blood that you grew up here, and this is part of your life. So, we appreciate that, too, but, you know, I recognize that you're giving back to the city something positive.
Thank you.
Thank you, Yolanda.
So, your blood, sweat, and tears are in here, then. It's all in there.
Thank you.
I did my best, and hopefully, this helps protect the city, as well as helps to be a guide and a benefit for the employees.
I'm sure, as professional as you are in your company, I have no doubt. Any other questions or comments?
I echo Commissioner Suarez, and I thank you. Thank you for your effort, and it's a wonderful thing that, you know, you're able to give back, you know? You're a daughter of West Miami, and being born here and raised here, and, you know...
Yeah, West Miami, bro.
We're proud of you. We're, you know, and very thankful.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Madam Clerk, if you could read item G, please.
Yes, item 11G, a resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami accepting the recommendation by the city manager, adopting a complete revamping of the City of West Miami Employees Policies and Procedures Manual attached as a CVA, as developed and submitted by LAGOM HR Incorporated as a pro bono project, acknowledging Miami-Dade County Commission on Ethics and Public Trust opinion dated November 5, 2021, authored by Executive Director Jose Arrojo, finding no conflict of interest between Yolanda Aguilar, a city manager of the City of West Miami, and Yolanda Menegazo, daughter of the city manager, and author of the Employees Policies and Procedures Manual marked as a CVA, providing for effective date.
Motion?
Motion by Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Second by Commissioner Blanes. On the motion, Commissioner Suarez, have you voted?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
5-0, item passes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would strongly suggest that you instruct the city manager to acknowledge with Mr. Jose Arrojo what a good job he had done, and write him a letter of thanks, because, as I said, his thoroughness in the report is really commendable. It's one of the best that I have seen, and I know that he spent a lot of time. We did manage to confer many times, and I think that this man just took his time, like he's always does, by the way. He is very efficient. But in this particular case, I have read all the opinions that he had, but this was exceptional, so...
Thank you for that recommendation, sir. Duly noted. Madam Manager, please issue that.
Of course. I will.
As suggested by the city attorney.
And I concur with the city attorney. Mr. Arrojo is very thorough in our verbal conversations with him, as well as with his written research, so...
Wonderful.
Definitely a great research tool that we now have that will serve us well.
Thank you. And Mrs. Menegazo, thank you again so much for your hard work in putting this together for us.
Can I suggest something?
Sure.
I would like to ask to be able to present her with a plaque of appreciation, so if it is with the will of this commission?
You have my blessing, sir.
We want to have you back here.
You have my blessing.
It'll have to be a 15-minute ride back, right?
Madam Clerk, if you could take care of that for us, please. Thank you. Great suggestion.
She'll be around.
Commissioner.
I will. I will. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
And you can bring the fam... Bring the girls. Bring the family for that. Of course. Madam Clerk, next item that I wanted to take out of order, please.
Yes, item 11C, request for mitigation of links for code violations of the property located at 6267 Southwest 14th Street, and owner George Resigno. This item was deferred at the November 3, please correct typo, 2021 Commission Meeting.
Good evening, gentlemen. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. David Moscoso, address is 824 Northwest 23rd Court, though unfortunately, not a resident of the City of West Miami. It has been my absolute pleasure over the past couple of months to work with. I mean, down the line, I think the City of West Miami is exemplary of what kind of work can get done when you have committed individuals, and really what our municipalities should strive to be in terms of professionalism, from Ms. Gonzalez, who has been a step ahead of me, every single step of the way, in terms of making sure that everything is going along in terms of making sure that everything is going along in terms of procedure, all the way with the city attorney and the city manager who have been incredibly inviting in terms of their openness of communication. Truly, truly spectacular. And then, of course, to see the commitment goes beyond just, you know, the confines of what the roles on paper are is inspiring to see what you can do when you have a community of individuals who are committed to the area that they grew up in that really truly care about it. So inspiring for me as a young attorney who works in the field of administrative law and is in and out every day at different municipalities to see that at the City of West Miami, it's about more than just filling a role. It's really about building community through solutions.
Thank you.
Very honored to be here tonight. The reason I'm here tonight is because of Mr. Resigno, who I had the pleasure of meeting a couple of months ago. As you can probably imagine, he was quite distressed when I met him. In fact, the reason I ended up meeting Mr. Resigno was because he sought another attorney who was really trying to come at him with a cost that Mr. Resigno could simply just not afford. So I said to myself, you know what? We have time in the day to make money, but we also have time in the day to represent those who really need representation. And so that's why I'm here today. Beyond that, this has also, I think, been an experience for Mr. Resigno of education, one that I think has brought to him a lot of perspective on the importance of protecting the character and the integrity of the zoning code of the City of West Miami. As I've explained to Mr. Resigno multiple times, but most recently, I think just last week when I spoke to him, the City of West Miami is a community that prides itself on maintaining a very close-knit character in terms of its homes, in terms of the way homes are built and in terms of the use that these homes are intended to have. Unlike, you know, the county, unlike other municipalities, which I will not bring up at this point, the City of West Miami makes it a point to protect the character it has because of how important it is to the future and to the maintenance of a community that really looks out for the best interests of its property owners. Mr. Resigno has come to understand that his home is a single-family residence. It's the purpose of it is not to be a multifamily, a rental property. It's really the home that he purchased for the purpose of his living, his dwelling. And he is going to maintain the respect of the character and the integrity of the zoning code of the City of West Miami. So for that reason that we present here before you today to ask that you take into consideration not only Mr. Resigno's newfound understanding, knowledge and respect of the City of West Miami zoning code and the character of this community, which is of utmost importance in protecting the quality of life of its residents, but also the outstanding factors that contribute to our hearing today, which are that Mr. Resigno is a low-income individual. Without commenting on his age, I will say that it's highly unlikely that Mr. Resigno is going to be in a position next year or in the foreseeable future to make a considerable amount of money. His home is truly that, his home. He doesn't have much else beyond that. And it is for that reason that we are asking you to consider a mitigation beyond what has already been given here at the City of West Miami so that Mr. Resigno can pay what is owed, but also so that he can put this in his past and move on and have this matter closed and continue, hopefully, to be a productive member of the City of West Miami. Thank you.
Counsel, first of all, thank you for your very, very kind words about our city and I completely agree with you. But thank you. You expressed yourself very nicely and from the heart. So thank you for your very kind words.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
In my 25 years of being the city attorney of the City of West Miami, this is about the best presentation that I've seen in any case. I think that I stand to commend my colleague.
I agree, sir.
I think that it's just a wonderful job that you have done, sir. And I really commend you as a colleague.
Thank you. Thank you so much. It means a lot.
You sure you're not a politician?
I'm positive.
I'm beginning to think that.
I talked to him before the meeting about possibly moving here.
Oh, I would love to be a resident of the City of West Miami.
Hopefully, he can become a resident sometime in the future.
I concur with the attorney.
Thank you so much. It means a lot. Thank you so much.
Mr. Bennett, did you have anything to say on this? On this case?
As far as litigation is concerned, the manager has our recommendation.
Okay. Mr. Resigno, did you have anything to say or did your very competent attorney cover absolutely everything?
He did a great job.
Okay, fantastic. Madam, have all the offenses been cleared? Has everything been cleared on this case?
Yes. The file is clear. After consideration of what's been said, what we know about the file and the compliance, which is really what we aim to accomplish here is compliance. We have some money that we need to recuperate on the file. Madam Mayor, I wish we can recommend that the fine be nothing, but we do have a few costs involved. And so Mr. Villalobos, Mr. Penn and I have conferred on this issue and I think $250 would cover the issue in terms of the mailings and the appearance before the board and whatever minor expenses we have in this file. And again, compliance is what we try to achieve here and I think we have achieved it.
And we'll give the customary 30 days for that payment to be received?
Yes. Yes.
Counsel, Mr. Resigno, does that work for you?
Truly taken aback by the absolute consideration that you have given. Absolutely, I think, an offer that you are willing to accept and follow through with. But more importantly, absolutely an offer that you appreciate and are going to continue to uphold the values in the city zoning code, correct? So thank you very much for that.
Thank you, sir.
And if I ever get a complaint in my house, I will reach out to you.
Yes.
Madam Clerk, if you can read the resolution for us, please.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Item 11D. Resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami authorizing the city manager to accept a mitigation offer in the amount of $2,050 from George.
No, $250.
$250.
Right.
$250. You said $2,000.
You said $2,000.
I said, did I? No. No. Disregard that. $250 from George Resigno on court enforcement liens for court violations of the property located at 6267 Southwest 14th Street, West Miami, Florida, providing that if payment in full is not paid in 30 days, then the amount owed shall revert to the original amount, lien amount, providing for an effective date.
Motion?
I need a second.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Blanca, a second by Commissioner Blanes. And Madam Clerk, call the vote, please.
Yes, Commissioner Suarez, have you voted?
Well, before the vote, I'd like to tell this gentleman, he keep a nice hair.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Yes. I vote yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Have you voted? Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diaz-Patron?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you. So now you'll work with the manager and the clerk on the payment and they'll take care of the rest.
Of course. Thank you all. Thank you so much. And I hope to be back. I hope to be back because this is really an incredible environment to be a part of. So I look forward to seeing you very soon.
You're always welcome. Always welcome. Mr. Resigno, thank you for being here and I look forward to seeing you again, sir.
What's your name again?
David Moscoso.
That's correct.
David what? Moscoso?
Moscoso, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Madam Clerk, next, back to the order of the agenda.
Okay, back to the original order. Item five, public comments.
Happy Thanksgiving. That's right.
Okay, Madam Clerk, I'm sorry, back to the order of the agenda.
Yes, Madam Mayor, item five, public comments.
Anyone here for public comments?
No, Madam Mayor.
Mrs. Caravi, any public comments? Next item, please.
Item six, report of the city manager.
Thank you. Madam Mayor and members of the city commission, I have a verbal report. I failed to report at the last meeting and it is my pleasure to advise you that our major, Pete Delgado, was elected as treasurer of the Miami-Dade County Chiefs of Police Association, where he will serve as treasurer for a period of one year. So congratulations, Pete.
Congratulations, sir.
Represent the city well. And the next item is we've been working with our legislative consultants and as of this afternoon, in conversation, several conversations with Mario Bailey that I've had over the last few years, it is evident that our ask for the $2 million to continue working on the potable water restoration project may not be feasible for this year. And so we have been asked to lower our ask, as they call it, to a million dollars. They were, Converge was working with the representative, Demi Buscata Cabrera's office. And I believe that she will carry this request on behalf of the City of West Miami.
Excellent.
We have been working with them as well on the request to fund $100,000 more to the community center to fund a second meal for the home-delivered recipients for the rest of this fiscal year that will help seniors that are living on a fixed income that, you know, due to the increase in all goods and services, that maybe a second meal will help them reduce any grocery bills that they may be faced with that are outside the scope of their budget. So we are working with them on that. Today I got an official letter from FEMA officially closing out, Mr. Penn, I hear this out, officially closing out Hurricane Irma.
Wow.
Can you believe that?
Congratulations, folks.
That's a 2017 storm, so.
Congratulations.
Yes, this was a breath of fresh air when I opened up that email today from FEMA, so.
You need to like maybe frame that or something.
Yeah, these audits are, they're grueling. Just up until last month, we were providing them information. So we are officially closed and we move on and hopefully there will not be another storm. As a reminder, City Hall will be closed Thursday and Friday of next week in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday. And last but not least, it was a pleasure seeing you, Madam Mayor and Commissioner Suarez at the community center today where our senior citizens celebrated Thanksgiving today. So slowly but surely, they're trying to, they're coming back to the center. So our numbers are not great. We're not to the pre-storm numbers, but slowly but surely, I see a comeback of the community center. And that being said, we just, we were able to secure a Tai Chi instructor that starts December 1st.
And it showed how happy they are to be back. You could see it in their faces today. They're just so happy to be back. It's really great to see them again.
It is. And I think that.
I'd like to make a comment. It was a big group.
It was a big group.
It was a full hall. We have a full hall there.
Happy and just being.
And they were very happy.
With their friends and socialization. So I was so, so happy to see them there.
Yes.
As happy as they were, so.
So I think that now with the classes, the Tai Chi classes, which is their favorite, I think we may see more and more of our seniors coming out. So that concludes my report. If you have any questions?
Thank you. No questions?
Or anything that I failed to follow up with?
No questions. No questions.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Manager. Excellent report.
Thank you.
Next item?
Item seven, report of the city attorney.
There's no report by the city attorney.
Thank you, sir. Next item?
Item eight, report of the city engineer.
He has a report.
He has a report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Commissioners.
By the way, I like your new logo, seeing that come across now.
It's cool, right?
Yeah, I like it. It's confusing now. Very nice. Very nice.
So, yes, I have a report today. I did provide a memo, which you all should have in your packet.
We do.
Primarily wanted to focus on a couple of the upcoming projects pertaining to some of the other items in the agenda with the monies that we have coming down the pipe now and what we plan to do with that. We spent the last couple of months between Juan, Yolanda and I and some of the staff trying to kind of figure out what the best way forward is to maximize the use of these monies. So what I presented here are two phases that break out how we're going to plan to expand these funds over the course of the next year or two. It'll probably take about two years. So I hope you've had a chance to read it. I'm not going to read it word for word, but I'll go over generally what we're planning to do. So the initial project we have coming up now, which makes use of the FDP grant funds that we already have, the $350,000, along with $250,000 from the half-cent penny. And that will be a phase that we're calling 1B, which is basically an extension of what's currently in construction now. Phase 1B will comprise of the next main line that will run up northwest, southwest 59th Avenue between 16th Street and 9th Street. So that'll essentially tie off that section of the city. It'll include a few service lines. Basically, we're trying to fit within the budgets that we have, so we have to kind of parcel out the phases. So it looks a little awkward on the map, but, you know, what we're trying to do is really just maximize the funds and not have any waste and not have any overlap on the projects. So that one's pretty straightforward. Phase two is the large project. They will make use of the American Rescue Plan Act funds that currently are approximately, that we have allocated for the water projects, approximately 3.7 million, which is great. Can't remember the last time I said a number like that here. So it's great to have that kind of money to do these projects and finally take a big chunk out of the master plan and really make a dent. Essentially, with these two projects, we'll finish up, you know, two-thirds of the system. So it's fantastic. So phase two will essentially take the project from 59th Avenue. We'll continue west all the way to 65th that'll take us. That'll also include a couple of main lines that'll run east to upsize a few of the service connections that we currently have on 12th Street. So we'll have a nice, big backbone 12-inch line running from 57th all the way to 65th that'll feed everything off of that main. So it's a significant project. That's going to be very, you know, that construction is going to be intense, for sure. It's going to be a lot different than what we just went through. It's going to take place in a big chunk of the city. So it's going to be a challenge, like any of these projects. But, you know, this is the time to do it. We have the monies and we're going to move forward with your approval. So I did include the two maps. The lines that are highlighted, the red ones are basically 12-inch lines. The orange are 8-inch lines and the green stuff is the service lines that are the easement in the back of the properties. These two projects combined will have an impact to about 580 properties. So in addition to the 200 or so we just did in the first phase, will have affected effectively half of the single-family homes in the city, more than half with these two, with these projects. So current status, really, we're just in planning right now. As we move forward, we've submitted proposals for the design and construction administration phases of it. So we'll move into design hopefully within the next month or two and then keep rolling. And, yeah.
I like the keep rolling part. It's still going.
Yeah. No, it's great. The timing, the timing can be better. You know, we're finishing up the first phase and we'll just, we'll just keep going.
Which is exactly how we wanted it to be. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Frankie?
Yes.
These phases, one, two and three, these are the most critical areas in our city that we identified, the study that we did about 10 years ago, right?
Yeah. Well, the study was done in 2016, I believe. 2016. It's been some time already. So 2016 and we did prioritize the areas of the cities into one, two and three.
These are the one. Very good. Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, so the first project started in phase one, highest priority, and then we've moved, we've basically just moved along that same thought process.
How much is left in the project? Like how much?
All right, so once we finish these two phases, all that will be left on, let's call it the north side of the city, north of 16th Street, the only thing left really is the western commercial corridor. So when I say that, I mean like 66th Avenue to 67th, that area there where we have some 12-inch mains and things that we're still going to have to put in at some point.
Is that what you're calling phase three?
No, that's actually what we're calling phase 2B. The monies that we're going after this year.
Right. The $600,000 right now, which is $350,000 from DEP from last session plus the $250,000 that we're putting in from the half-cent penny tax, we're labeling that one phase 1B.
Okay.
Then the American Rescue project funding, we're going to label phase two.
Right.
And then the balance of the city would be phase three or phase?
Or phase 2B.
2B.
Yeah.
Okay. I was referring to the math. Go ahead, sir. I'm sorry.
Sorry, I'm sorry. So what I'm asking is after the money that we're putting in the ground from the federal money and. and, and everything else that you've outlined in your memorandum, um, how much is left in terms of ballpark?
In terms of cost?
Yeah.
Ballpark, four to five million, that's, you know, that's probably in that ballpark. It's, it's really the southern half of, I mean, the south, it's not even a half because we don't have the whole section, but, uh, the southern part of the city, everything south of Sixteenth, uh, east, generally east of Sixty-second.
Okay.
Um, so yeah, uh, just off ballpark, you're looking at probably another four million dollars to finish everything out.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, which initially in our, in our original estimates in the master plan, we had a number, uh, off the top of my head, I don't have it in front of me, but I believe it was upwards of sixteen million, something like that, were the initial estimates.
Sixteen, seventeen million.
Near eighteen million.
Yeah, and that was for, again, those were high-level estimates at the time, order of magnitude, and as we kind of drill down, uh, those numbers have come down.
Right, I only ask because in, you know, in the conversations I've had with, um, Senator Garcia and Representative Jose de Cabrera, you know, they, they always, they ask, because, you know, we've come to them so many, in years now, and they, they look at the past requests, and they're like, "How big is this project?" You know, we've funded it, we've funded every other year and, and, um, and I, I like to have an answer to, to give back to them, so they have an understanding.
I could, I could give you a better, a better answer, um, a more refined answer. Phase three, the good thing there is that there, there are a lot of new lines down there, because we did make a lot of improvements when the, uh, the, the buildings were being put in. Um, so it's, it's, it may be less than that. I can give, get you a better number.
Yeah, that'd be great, because it, it does give, uh, some context, so I can visualize the ending of the project at some point.
Absolutely.
Um, because they, you know, they're, they're, they seem very confident they can, they can get that one million number, uh, both of them. Um, but, you know, they have to, they're the ones selling it, and when they, they sell it, they have to have an understanding of what's actually going on.
Right, and, and I know that they're looking to, to add to that. I know Madam Mayor and Commissioners that they, they always look for match dollars from the city. Unfortunately, we cannot use the American Rescue project funding as, as leverage towards any project. But they do know that we are emphasizing and trying to use up most of the money in, in this project, so there's a great contribution that the city's putting forward.
On, on, on that point, just so I don't, you know, so I don't forget, because it's important, because this came up in my conversations with the Senator and the Representative, which is, I understand that we can't match the dollars. See, we, we could talk to Converge, um, because they seem to suggest that there might be, wha- wha- what they, what they wanna know is just that, right? That we're protesting the project with whatever funding we're getting.
Yes.
Um, not necessarily match fund, you know, matching it, but that we are, these applications are, are asking if any federal money has been used. And so, so just make sure, Converge, that we're filling the application out right, because it could be determinative on whether we get funding or not at the committee levels.
Okay.
Not, not with, I mean, the Senator and Representative understand, they, they've, they, they understand that, that we're protesting the project, but there's a hun- you know, there's a hundred and twenty members of the House and, and these committees, they have millions of dollars of requests. Um, so it's very important that the applications be, um, very accurate on that. So check with Converge to make sure that, that we can't, that we are filling that part out right. And I know, I know we can't match the dollars, just make sure the wording is, is right, that we don't have to, we cannot put the amount that we have put in the ground or we are putting the ground appropriated from the federal money, because that could be very important.
Okay, I will do that, and I will also share this memo, which I think is extremely, um, you know, uh, very detailed in what the upcoming phases look like and the work that's, that lies ahead. And with the engineer's statement of probable cause, which is also a part of the packet here, I think that there's going to be a very clear understanding of where we're at, where we're going, and what kind of timelines we're looking at to aggressively tackle this.
Thank you, and if you can, if you can get me that, that'd be awesome.
I think that, I mean, it's a great idea to do that at this point, uh, this phase. I can certainly do a much more refined estimate and get you a, a good number, uh, and I understand why you needed it, it, it makes sense.
Give that to all of us. I'd like to see it too, Frankie.
Yeah, absolutely.
Manager, if you send that dollar to the manager.
I sure will.
Mm-hmm. And, and it's important, um, I think it's important, and I'm sure they know that the Representative and the Senator, that this, um, American Rescue Act money, we could have used it in many different ways.
Absolutely.
But, you know, we felt that this was our priority, you know, we've, we've been trying for so long, and we've been going to Dallas, see for so long, asking for this money, so the fact that we, we're putting this money towards that, you know, we don't have to ask them for so much, so that, that speaks for itself as well. Not, not, you know, matching, you know, ma- matching, but we felt this was, this was, uh, our, our money well-spent, you know, as far as redoing this system that was so aged and in...
As, 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 uh, Mr. Pedron said, uh, it's, it's to see that there's an end in sight.
Right, finally.
Yeah, but that's the end of the project, I think that also...
And I think it's important that they know as well that we have put the money on the ground, that we are diligently complying with the terms of the contract, that we are, you know, finishing up the project before the deadline. We're not asking for extensions, so that we're serious about what we're doing, and there's no deviation from the original plan.
Right.
So I think it's always important, and especially to the new members of the House and the Senate, that don't have perhaps the historical data, to let them know, "Listen, we came in here, um, you know, fifteen years ago." I know that Commissioner Suarez and Commissioner Blanes and, and those of you who were sitting here, um, way before that, you know, we were, our ask was about seventeen million dollars for these projects, so now it's less, we're putting less of a burden on, uh, on the state. So, I think that, again, uh, clarifying what the Vice Mayor, um, brought up, those are very good key points that we need to make sure that they understand. And I think this memo is also a very good tool for them, because it's, there's a visual of what takes place and when it takes place.
Yes, excellent, thank you. Any other, any questions?
Well, the second part of my memo, I, I do wanna touch upon it, uh, not spend a whole lot of time on it, but it is equally important, is the, the stormwater pump station improvements that we're also proposing, uh, to take up a chunk of this money to use. Um, you know, we kind of forget sometimes how, uh, reliant we are in these pump stations, um, particularly here on the west side of the city. If those pump stations fail and there's a major storm, the city, the city's underwater. So it's, as far as I'm concerned, that's critical infrastructure, uh, and those pumps are very expensive to maintain, uh, let alone replace. So, uh, what Juan and I had, had, had thought of, uh, you know, now that we have these, this type of funds available, uh, that it would be the appropriate time to try to get those pumps replaced. Uh, they have a lifespan of, you know, just about twenty years, uh, and we're coming up on that horizon, so, uh, it makes sense to do that and just be, uh, proactive rather than wait for the pumps to fail and, and then be behind the eight-ball scrambling for half a million dollars, so...
I have to agree with that, yep. Any questions for the City Engineer on his report?
I think we are doing the right way.
Agreed.
And I hope we get some money from those seventeen billion that are going to come to the state.
Mm-hmm. Agreed, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alonso.
Very thorough report. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item nine, Committee Report, Report of the Mayor.
I do have something, not, not so much a report, but more of an ask. I, I, and the reason I'm bringing it up now, I, I didn't have time to put it on the agenda. Um, so I, I'd like to get your blessing. I've been, I've been contacted by an organization, um, uh, requesting a proclamation recognizing November as National Adoption Month in Florida. It's an annual observance to celebrate the, the thousands of children who are adopted from foster care and, you know, are, are put with very loving families. And coincidentally, the Governor recently signed, it was today or yesterday, a proclamation recognizing, um, uh, November as National Adoption Month. So I'd like your blessing in, in, in asking the Clerk to, for a proclamation for this. All in favor?
I...
Thank you, and I apologize for bringing it up, you know, during my report, but I didn't have time to put it on, on the agenda. Madam Clerk, I'll send you an email with all the, there's a template for this, and then we can just get that, get that out.
Okay, Madam Mayor.
So it's done during the, during the month, and they're, they're making this ask of, of all the municipalities in Florida. Um, so thank you for that, and, and that was it from, from my, from my report.
Any other, uh, committee?
Any other committee reports? No, ma'am, next item.
Item ten, Unfinished Business, under Unfinished Business. Item ten A, this is, was a request to demand the, to the zoning zoning board the following ordinance for review, updated and, uh, dates and recommendation. This item was, uh, deferred at the last meeting of November third, and, uh, and the ordinance are signage, boats, RVs, utility trailers, campers, trailers, animals allowed, display of, of outdoor merchandise.
And I believe you handed us a, a memo on this, Madam Clerk. Is this, this memorandum from the manager, is that on this item?
Uh, this is a...
From Mr. Penn.
Mr. Penn.
Oh, okay, okay.
And you have copies of that memo.
Okay.
And, uh, basically, the zoning board was asked to review, uh, the ordinances at the past meeting, and so it basically contemplates a follow-up on what they did review.
Okay. Would it be coming before us anytime soon, or?
I'd like to yield to Mr. Penn, because he does attend the meetings.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. The zoning board will entertain the new ordinance, once it's provided by Mr. Biello, was for the amendments that they, uh, put down in that, uh, memo.
Okay.
And, uh, once they are presented with it and they see that their requests are put in there, then we will bring it to the City Commission for review and then the process of publication and adoption.
Okay, excellent, so it'll, when it's, when the ordinance is done, it'll come before us?
Correct.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Mr. Penn, I have a question for you, uh, since you're there. Uh, we had a Florida Power and Light representative not long ago, and he, uh, talked about replacing the, uh, some of the lights, or just about all the lights in the city with, with, uh, certain spectrum LED lights.
Correct.
And I see that, uh, some of the lights have been changed already.
I haven't seen...
On Eleventh Street, on Silvania and Eleventh Street, on Fifty-Eighth Avenue and Eleventh Street, uh, the, uh, you know, the pole lights, you know, the ones that have the extended arm?
The Cobra heads, yes.
Yeah, they've changed those lights.
To LEDs, or?
They're, they're a different spectrum. They're a much brighter spectrum. And some of the decorative ones, they're in the middle of the block on, on Eleventh Street, between Fifty-Eighth and Fifty-seventh, and from Silvania to, to Sixtieth, they've, they've done that already. I was under the impression that they were gonna do this much, much later.
Yeah, they gave us the impression they would start at the beginning of the year.
They started.
But I, I saw that same truck.
I saw it too. I saw it yesterday. Pike, I think they had a Pike sign.
There may be leftovers from another project that they have.
I walked out of my house and I thought there was a UFO there. I'm like, what the heck?
Is that bright, is that much brighter?
Yes, it is. Not too bright, I mean, it's, it's, uh, as far as, uh, it's, it's gonna aid the police incredibly, uh, you know, safety, you know, people crossing the street.
I was waiting by there to look at it tonight.
Yeah, I thought it was gonna be first of the year as well.
Correct.
But I, I did see that same truck.
Could it be that they're replacing the lights that are out?
No, 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 these lights were not out.
Okay. Mr. Penn, you, as part of this project, you were gonna go around with them and, and, and identify streets that, that have no light, that were, that were in need of, of a pole and a light. Have you done that already? Have you done that yet?
No.
So that's still going to happen? Because I, I know there are some streets that there are, there are no lights at all.
The original agreement with them allocated three lights per street.
Mm-hmm.
And all streets should have three lights per street. Some, depending on their, the locations with the avenues, they have five, because the avenues will have the pole lights with the Cobra head. But we will check that again.
Right, because I remember you guys said in the meeting that you were gonna go around with them to identify streets that needed...
What we were gonna go around was to identify the poles that need replacement.
And the ones that needed, right.
And there are those, right.
The decorative ones.
Right.
Yes.
The ones that are faded out and peeling.
Right, yeah.
And all the, um, what do you call it, the stuff that itches you, sticking out?
Fire glass.
Yes, that.
So if you can call them and follow up and see what's, you know, what's going on. But yeah, it looks great, looks good.
Excellent.
Excellent lighting.
Okay, uh, thank you for that. Um, Madam Clerk, you don't have to, um, put this on the next agenda then, it's being taken care of, so now we'll just wait for the ordinance to come before us. So you don't have to, um, continue that as unfinished business.
Okay, Madam Mayor.
And thank you all for the follow-up. Okay, next item?
Item ten C, uh, this is the parking meters report that was deferred at the, at the November third commission meeting.
Uh, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Commission, in my report at the last meeting, I reported that, um, a while back ago, the city implemented a parking meter program along the area of Ninth Street, just off of, west of Fifty-seventh Avenue, uh, particularly, uh, in, um, in the back or the side of Latin American Restaurant. Um, I am advised by Mr. Penn that there are approximately seventeen meters that are now out of service. All the meters are out of service. The majority of them must be repaired, or the city has a choice of moving to a more modern system. So, um, I asked Mr. Penn to inquire a while back ago from the vendor as to the cost of the existing meters and how it would, how much it would cost to, um, to, to fix them. And, um, he quoted, uh, somewhere in the neighborhood of two thousand dollars for the repairs. Um, as well, I asked him to price out the, a meter using a new technology, what it would cost us. So Mr. Penn came, excuse me, came back and told me that the company had advised that somewhere to, to implement a new system with four G technology, it would cost us around ten thousand dollars. Um, obviously, the revenue that we're receiving is, is nothing from the program, because the meters are not working properly. So, we'd like to get to your feedback to tell us how you wish for us to proceed. Do you want for us to repair the meters, or do you want us to go to a new, modern system that contemplates the, um, the box and do away with the meters? I think that's a cleaner approach, that may work out better in the area. And we could do away with the meters. I don't know if there's a possibility of them purchasing the old meters from us and giving us a credit to acquire the box. I don't know if that is something that they'll entertain, and I'm, I'm being advised that he, um, he doesn't think so. So we, we wanted to get some feedback from you. Um, obviously, this is a biggest expense, and, um, we wanted to, to bring it to your attention to see how you want us to, to move forward.
Well, while they were working, before they became inoperative, how was that going?
The revenue was trickling in, the revenue was, um, I, I wanna say that it, there was a net profit, if you would, after paying the vendor for the service, IPS is the vendor. And, um, we pay for a monthly charge for the, for the meters, for the technology
Correct.
of the meters. And so we were making, I wanna say approximately four hundred dollars a month of net revenue after paying expenses. And of course, that is, you know, you have to have dedicated manpower to go by the area and make sure that, uh, people that did not have money in the meters, that they got ticketed. So this is obviously an issue involving possible citations. So, right now, we're not making any money and we're still having to pay IPS, because they are the, uh, that's part of the agreement between the city and IPS.
Okay, so, I mean, we don't have a, a parking department, so it was our...
Police department.
Police department that was handling that.
Correct.
Okay.
I have a question.
Sure, Mr. Penn, do you have something to say before?
No, go ahead.
Go ahead, what's your question, sir?
Mr. Penn, when we first, uh, located those park meters there, we used the coins?
Correct.
It's what you call the box.
No, those are the coins and the meters.
That was the, just put the coin, nothing but telephone, no, no electronic?
No, they're still electronic. They're both, coin and electronic.
But the beginning, we only put with the, uh, just put the coins.
No, or you have the option of using a credit card.
That was the first one we, we did?
Yes, it has both. Has both options in each individual meter.
And how long, um, was, were they working those meters? Two years, three years?
No, longer than that.
Longer, about four years, four and a half years. It's been that long.
You have, um, a relation, I mean, uh, you have the, the accounting about how much those was, those meters were making profit in those months?
We, we have a revenue account for every fiscal year, and we also have an expense account for that.
Profitable?
Yes, it was.
But I think it's longer than that. I think it's like ten years that we've had the meters.
Ten?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, years ago.
Time flies.
And now, you, you making a study if we replace, how much is the re- uh, re- um, repair those boxes?
To repair the ones, what we have, if, right now, runs about four hundred and fifty dollars per meter.
And how many, how many are broken?
All of them.
All of them?
Yeah, they have one thing... Yeah, they have one thing wrong.
How many we have there?
Seventeen.
Seventeen?
Uh-huh.
For four hundred and thirty dollars.
Correct.
Each. Each, I know.
You mentioned two thousand dollars for all the repairs.
Was it? I don't have the information.
Yes.
That's what she said there.
Yes.
Okay.
So two thousand.
To repair the seventeen meters would be-
Whatever the IPS quote is.
To repair the seventeen meters will, will be at twenty-five hundred dollars.
Correct. If that's what the IPS.
Yes, that was a proposal from IPS.
And that, and that, and though, if we repair those meters, how much we can get it in the profit?
We'll go back to-
Just compare with a year going years ago.
About four hundred dollars a month.
Will yield four hundred dollars a month.
Oh, about five thousand.
If it's enforced.
Five thousand a year.
Right.
What those meters have to be?
So it's twenty-five hundred dollar repair versus a five thousand a year profit?
Right.
That, that's what you plan? I mean, that's what they-
That's what the number suggests.
The number you have are those. What are the solution? Take it away, the meters, what we do?
Well, if we remove all the meters that we're using now, we could go to the, on the one box that you see in most places with the numbered, you put in your license tag and-
Right.
And you do a pay-by-phone?
Pay-by-phone type of-
Pay-by-phone.
Yeah.
Do we have any idea what that system runs?
No, we haven't.
But that, those are costly.
Yes.
Those are very modern.
Our initial investment in the, in those meters was like twenty thousand dollars.
The cheaper one, the cheaper procedure is to replace.
The cheaper would be to repair.
To repair.
I mean, to repair. Twenty-five, about twenty-five hundred dollars.
Correct.
Yeah, but those are very outdated. Very, very outdated.
No, the technology's not outdated. Uh, what, what gets replaced now, uh, those all ran on three G. They're gonna get new technology as far as four G access. So that your credit cards, when they go in, they, they don't jam up and stuff like that. And then the, uh, the, uh, solar panels that are worn out, they get replaced. And it, the whole meter gets an upgrade.
So it's basically paid by credit card?
Correct. Or coins. It's up to you.
I don't know. I don't think anyone carries coins anymore, so.
So if they get repaired, they should last three, four, five years?
At least to repair.
Why don't we repair them, and in the meantime, you know, maybe not this, maybe the next coming budget, or maybe the next one? We, you know, we-
Look at the replace.
We, we, we look into replacing them?
Can, um, yeah, please, can, can someone give me, cause I was, I think, if you're, if you're right, ten years, I was sixteen years old when these things came in. Um, but I was-
You're telling me you didn't ride your bicycle over there and put money in these meters, your coins in this meter?
Can someone give me a history lesson on how the meters got there? Like, what was the, what was the purpose of it?
The, there, there was a, a problem with parking of the commercial area in that area. So the city decided to turn the, the flow of the traffic in one way in order to create parking spaces along the-
Both sides of the street.
Both of the roadway. After we did that, that's when we, uh, installed the, the parking meters in order to keep people from parking there all day and defeating the purpose of what the me, the parking spaces were for.
And the residents were complaining.
Yeah, because if we don't do something, the people will, will park overnight there. We never know.
They would pull into people's driveways and they would back out and then go back the other way.
So it was at the time that I think FDOT was doing the renovation to the upgrade to Fifty-seventh Avenue, that our city engineer designed the, the, um, I guess the, the one-
One-way direction.
One-way direction there.
Of Ninth Street.
And that sort of mitigated the issue with the residents.
Another question. To repair, how long takes to repair?
Usually about a month. We ship them all to them and they ship them back.
So even if we think about to repair, we will not get the holidays?
Yeah.
That will be after the holidays they repair?
That they'll all be back in service.
Could be before.
Could be.
Because holidays, oh, can give you some extra money.
Depending on how fast it comes back.
Because of business there.
Uh, how, how does our police department feel about, uh, having the added duty of meter maid?
That's why, yeah, I know we don't have a parking department, so I didn't know who was enforcing this.
Well, we do go by there. Obviously, we, we used to go by there when they were working. Um, obviously, if they're not working, then it's not a benefit to the-
But does this require the officer to, to get out of the vehicle and look at each meter?
With, with a new system, w- we don't need, uh, to have the police come by and, and check, right?
Yeah, you do. There's no other way to-
You look, you look for the expired tags, you know.
Expire, expire time.
Meter has, uh, uh, color codes for, so when the meter doesn't have any money in it and somebody's parked there.
You still need to have-
Anyway, we need human power there for that.
So I, I, I understand the one-way, the one-way, um-
Concept.
The one-way, you know, what that's solved. Who, who is, who's the, like, who's the risk of parking there overnight? Cause there's no, there's no, like, you know, the closest residence would be, you know, the, the Fifty-seventh Avenue building, I guess, besides, because there's the shops right after, there's the bank and then the shops, and then, and then comes the houses. Um, and then there's the bank and the Fifty-seventh Building, which, um, you know, there's people overnight parking now in the bank. So I don't know if that's, that's really, who, who's, who's, who's the kind of the fear of overnight parking that we have in meters there? Cause I'm, what it essentially is, and I don't know what, I have no idea what, what, you know, for example, Latin America, because that's basi- it's basically Latin America's parking. Um, I don't know what, what their thoughts are, but it's, uh, i- is there, is there really any, is there really any overnight parking risk?
There may be. I, I, we don't know. I, I don't know what the, if the police department keeps tabs on whether there is overnight parking right now. Could, I, I mean, Latin American closes pretty late. Um, normally, they close like after one o'clock in the morning, so, um, and, and a lot of their employees were parking using these meters because they couldn't find parking anyplace else. And basically, the, the owner of Latin American asked them to find alternatives for parking outside so that the guests, the patrons can use the corner property that they have for parking, the back of the bank, and of course, across the street, Wells Fargo, which has dedicated parking spaces for-
But, but, Yolanda, may I?
Yes.
The point is not Latin America. The point is, uh, some, like a homeless, somebody come with a car to park and go away.
Right.
They, they don't think to do in the, in the Wells Fargo Bank because they know the bank have some kind of, of security. They don't like to go to the other bank because they know that, because the parking space is from the bank. Latin America practically, the only parking they have is the front. But the other, if we let those places open, will be a street parking. So you don't know if it's somebody from the Ninth Street, or from Eighth Street, or a prostitute, or whatever, they just go park there overnight, one or two day, or three days. We don't know. It's not Latin America. It's anywhere, anyway, any, anywhere.
Who, who gives?
Anybody.
I'm sorry. Who, who gives the tickets for, I see outside on the street, for example, on, on Tenth Street. Um, I see sometimes that a car will be there, um, maybe over a certain amount of time, I guess. I guess that's what's happening. There's some sort of ticket on there. I don't ever look at the ticket, but is that, is that some, is that a limit on the amount of time they're parking there, or?
No, they're probably too, parked too close to the corner, probably.
Oh, is that what it is?
Or close to a fire hydrant.
Close to a fire hydrant, or parked the wrong direction, uh, could be a whole host of-
Okay.
Or it could be a commercial vehicle that is there longer than they're supposed to have the vehicle there. So usually, there's a tire marking that's made, and that tells the police department if the vehicle has been moved or not.
Well, my, my idea, I mean, with the numbers that we're talking, and the experience we have been in the last ten, twelve years, is to repair and see what happened with twenty-five hundred dollars, what happened and fix, we fix the problem.
Run the meters.
And we put some kind of security there. The security, I mean, the meter. So it's a parking meter there, you come with a bank, and you say, well, there's a meter there. You cannot bank and just park and go away.
Well, I, I'll just say, I'm not, I'm not a super fan of the meters, but I agree with you. If, if we're gonna go forward with repair, replace, repairing the meters is, is the way to go, I think, personally.
Okay, so.
I think so.
Yes, so be it, then. I, and I know this isn't, um-
That expense comes out of the half-cent penny tax, just so you know. That's part of the, uh, allotted allowances by the use of surtax dollars. So, um, we will proceed with that.
Right, all in favor of giving our blessing to repair the meters?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Done. Give our blessing. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Yes, item eleven, uh, ten D, monthly report of freebie ridership for the month of October twenty twenty-one.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners, in your packet, you will find the updated freebie report. Um, the total passengers for the month of October, from the first to the thirty-first, were three hundred and fifteen passenger, uh, passengers. So people are really buying into the freebie alternative. Um, we are, at any point or given point in time, we are doubling our, our old numbers. So even during slower months, and I think October may be a slow month, was a sma- uh, a slower month. September and October, we are seeing that people are really catching on to the concept.
Good, which is exactly what we wanted. We wanted it to work and it's working. Now, I do have a question you might wanna, if you can present this to, to Jason. I was looking at the rides by waiting times. I'm a little concerned with, we, we have ri- waiting times over thirty minutes?
Yes, I, I saw that, and I don't know what's going on.
Even the twenty-eight minute, we shouldn't have that long of a wait.
Correct.
We're not that big. So if you could just have him drill down on that and maybe come back to us with a little bit more detail on that, that, that's unacceptable. I mean, what do we have to do to fix that?
Agree.
So, yeah, that, that-
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I, I have a comment.
Mm-hmm.
I remembers, I saw you and Yolanda talking in the computer center with one of those old, uh, residents. They can, they, we don't have, the, the, the boss is broken.
Oh, I sent that conversation to the manager.
Talking about maybe use the free, the freebie.
Uh, we have an ADA vehicle on back that we could possibly put into service. Um, I'm sure there's gonna be a cost for it, um, for that, for the timeframe that we need it. But I think we should look into it, uh, because you have senior citizens that are using walkers to get around. They cannot go on the bus. It is just simply not something that would be a best practice for the city because we have to avoid liability and avoid them getting injured. So we, I was thinking about calling Jason, uh, tomorrow or the next day to make sure that, uh, to see if we can put this, this, uh, freebie into, into service.
Madam Manager, from day one of this program, that that vehicle was there. So if a request was made, the, the requister has the option of, of requesting a handicap.
Yes.
So that the driver would take the vehicle he's in, bring it here, and switch to that vehicle and pick up that passenger. So that's always been-
Correct.
In, in, in use.
Is, is we're gonna have to tweak the times, uh, a little bit in the morning because seniors wanna get in here, uh, early in the morning, fairly early, so that they can participate in the activities prior to the lunch.
What are the hours now? It's eleven, right? What is it?
The, the hours are now eleven, so we would have to push it back or maybe modify the arrangement. I have to talk to Jason and see what would be the best way to go to put that vehicle in, that second vehicle into service, the ADA vehicle.
It already is in service.
It is in service.
If somebody requested, it's there.
It is there.
Okay, okay.
But I'm saying devoting a, if you would, a period of time to bring the residents to and from the center. So we may have to tweak those hours and, and go out a little bit earlier. So I will be talking to Jason about that to see if we can make that happen. Because some of those seniors who spoke to us about this today do not reside in the city. And I don't know if they're gonna be in the route, the new expanded route.
Okay.
So I have to do a little bit of fact-finding before I'm able to commit to something that, you know, I know they're-
I just wanted to clarify that the vehicle is there for use as we speak.
As we speak, it's available to anybody that needs it and relies on it, yes.
Good, very good.
Very good, taking consideration of that.
Yes, I will report back to you as soon as I have a response, possibly before the next commission meeting.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you. Um, next item, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Madam Mayor, item eleven, under new business agenda items, item eleven A, presentation of recognitions to employees' anniversaries. Annette Gonzalez, twenty-five years of service.
I should've read that for you. You don't have to read your own item.
Well.
Well, in that case.
That's what I think.
I, I think we should all go, we should all go forward.
Work here when she was thirty, right?
I was just gonna say. I was gonna ask.
She was nine years old, right?
There you go.
Twenty-five years.
You came right out of elementary school here?
No.
Time flies when you're having fun. Vice Mayor, that's twice tonight. You're making me feel really old.
Oh, my God.
You did.
Do you come at his age? Yeah. Long time ago, long time ago.
Madam Clerk, twenty-five years of service, employee award, Annette Gonzalez. My condition, my, yes, Mr. Penn, please take this over because, because, but let her fix her hair first, okay? In my condition, I've made twenty-five years of loyal dedicated service and committed to the city of West Miami and its citizens with all of our gratitude. Day of this seventy-third member to one, Robert Davis Mayor, Vice Mayor, Vice President, Commissioner, Senator, and the blind guy, Andrew Summers.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, twenty-five years, wow.
Congrats, Madam Clerk.
Smile, please.
Yes.
That's a quarter of a century.
It sure is.
Yes, the manager, uh, Mr. Penn, he is Frankie, yes.
All I, all I can tell you is, when she walked in here, she was carrying a double stroller with her kids.
You know, like, part of the, the results here of twenty-five years.
Thank you. Thank you very much for reporting here.
Three, oh, forty, get forty.
A quarter of a century. Yeah.
Well, one thing we don't have is, is trouble keeping our employees.
That's for sure.
You have trouble getting rid of them.
Speaks volumes, speaks volumes to the city.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, thank you from the bottom of our hearts for such a tremendous job.
The opportunity.
We're sticking with us. We're sticking with us, because sometimes we can be a little difficult to deal with. So, thank you for, for sticking with us for so long. And all our requests and, you know, um, thank you.
All of the above, yes.
All of the above. Because sometimes I know we can be difficult. Uh, not that we intend to, it's nothing personal, but, you know.
I know that, Ms. Clerk.
Um, okay, so, next item.
Will be item eleven H, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
Item eleven H is report of RFQ request for qualifications results for traffic engineering services and recommendation by city engineer. And, uh, the report is that on November second, twenty twenty-one, at two P M, the, uh, request for qualifications for traffic engineering services was opened and two, uh, two submittals were received. Number one by Caltron Engineering Group, and the second one by CHP Engineers and Surveyors. That concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Um, go ahead and read the resolution, and then I'd like someone to explain to me what this is for, what it's all about.
Yes. Item eleven I is a resolution of a mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami accepting the recommendation of the city engineer to include Caltron Engineering Group and CHP Engineering and Surveyors into the pool of providers pursuant to a request for qualifications, seeking qualified independent providers to conduct independent traffic studies for new real estate development in according to ordinance two thousand and nineteen zero three, authorizing the city manager to execute any and all documents necessary to incorporate said companies into the city's pool of providers, providing for effective date.
Mr. Penn? What is this?
This was a request by the Vice Mayor, uh, when we changed the ordinance, twenty nineteen zero three, to request companies, uh, traffic engineering companies to, uh, provide us with, uh, uh, professional, uh, qualifications. And therefore, we would assign projects that come for development in the city to those companies for them to do the traffic study independent of the developer that's doing the, the actual building.
Okay.
Uh, we did that. We, we, for a while, we didn't have any requests. We have some requests now in the pipeline of development. And therefore, we went ahead and we followed the- And therefore, we went ahead and we followed the procedure of the ordinance. And these two companies came and provided us with their qualifications. And now we ranked them as one and two. And we need the approval tonight in order to provide them with the information for the properties that are seeking to redevelop.
So we're adding to the, we already had some, right? No? This is the first time?
This is the first time. Before, before the developer would bring his own traffic engineering company. This is now us assigning a traffic engineering company to do the review on whatever they wish to develop and provide us with the report. And then the, the developer pays for the company that does the work.
And then this is a company that will stay as, stay doing this or do each time we go out to bid for, for a company?
This is good.
This will be part of the, let's call it pre-approved list, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay. And is there any timeline as to how long this will, this company will remain?
Three years.
So we're three, and in three years from now, we'll open this up again?
Correct.
Okay. Um, Vice Mayor, this was your item back then, so does this meet with your approval?
Yep. I, you know, it's, uh, it was a long time coming, but we hadn't have anything in the pipeline, um, to force it to actually go to an RFQ. Um, but this is back in twenty nineteen.
Correct.
That we passed, uh, this ordinance. So, uh, as much as I am not excited for a developer project, I am excited to see, um, how the ordinance works. So, um, I'm, I'm glad that this came up.
Okay, any other questions?
Well, I have a question. Uh, this, uh, Caltrans Corporation is qualified for that, right?
Correct.
So if it's qualified and they go to the pool, then your idea was make a pool to a company that want to be servicing the city? And make a motion to approve.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Call the vote.
Yes, Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote? Commissioner Blanca?
Yes, she's a yes.
I'm sorry. Uh, Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Excellent. Next item, please.
Next item, eleven J, request for resolution in reference to identifying the use of American Rescue Program's funds in the amount of four million, three hundred and ninety thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars for specified use as approved by the American Rescue Program Agreement between the city of West Miami and the state of Florida Department of Emergency Management by city manager.
Thank you. Um, Madam Mayor and, and Vice Mayor and city commissioners, uh, this request comes to you so that we can lock in pretty much the projects that are gonna be funded with the use of the American Rescue Act funding. And so the state is looking for somewhat of a commitment by way of resolution that ties into the dollars that we've already executed under the contract agreement with the Florida Department of Emergency Management. The projects that we are recommending, that we have discussed with you individually, are, uh, all outlined in the draft resolution. I don't know if at this time you would like to, um, the clerk to, to read the resolution.
When you are done, for her to read the resolution. Madam Clerk, please read item K.
Okay, item K, a resolution of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami authorizing city manager to allocate the funds for the American Rescue Programs to the following project, potable water replacement program phase two to include design, engineering permitting, and construction services steward system, stormwater and pump station rehabilitation project, uh, single, uh, wait, wait, okay. Single audits for year one, two of the funding establishing premium pay for sworn law enforcement officers of the city of West Miami. All projects to be funded by the American Rescue Program for a grand total of multi-year funding in the total amount of four million, three hundred and ninety thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars, broken down into two lump sum payments in the amount of two million, one hundred and ninety-five thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars in fiscal, in for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, and two million, one hundred and ninety-five thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars in for fiscal year two, instructing, uh, the office of the city manager, manager's office to oversee said projects and to provide updates of the status of the project, all expenses, and to ensure that all reports are filled with the, filed with the Florida Department of Emergency Management on a timely basis. Said projects to be accomplished at no cost to the taxpayers, providing for effective date.
Motion. I have a motion. I need a second. Call the vote.
Commissioner Blanes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca? Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you.
Next item.
Item L, resolution of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami disbanding the charter review board twenty-twenty-one pursuant to article seven, section seven oh six of the city of West Miami charter, providing for effective date.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Call the vote.
Commissioner, uh, Suarez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca? Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you. Next item.
Item M, eleven M, report by the chief of police in reference to increase to the Miami Day Association of Chief of Police County Court Standby System and recommendation by the office of the city manager to fund expense out of the city's contingency funds by chief of police and city manager.
Chief, hold on. Go ahead and read the resolution, Madam Clerk, item N.
Yes, item N, resolution of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami accepting recommendation of city manager and chief of police to fund the county court standby pro- uh, program for contingency, from contingency funds and instructing the city manager to include future expenses related to the county court standby program in future budgets, providing for effective date.
Chief, it's all yours. Good evening once again. Um, by way of a history, let me explain what this is. Um, the court standby system was implemented by the Miami Day Chiefs of Police in conjunction with the state attorney's office and the court system, the, the head judge. Uh, traditionally, most police departments, uh, have to get paid either a three or a four hour minimum for going to court. And as we, as, as time went on, it was getting very expensive for the cities and the county government to pay for all this overtime for policemen. Policemen would end up having to go to court, sit there for a case to be extended for, for a later time. Um, that happens five, six, seven times on one case. And each time, the policeman would have to be paid a three hour minimum for going to court, maybe fifteen, twenty minutes, and being told, go home, we're not gonna go to trial today. So they came up with this standby system. We've been doing this for the last twenty years.
At least.
So, the average, and of course, and with time, things, costs have gone up and they divide it, you know, amongst the thirty-eight police departments in the, uh, in the, in the county. And every year, we go ahead and we pay one year in the rear. So in other words, we're paying the bill for last year, and then next year, we'll pay the bill for this year. Um, and, and it's pro, prorated, obviously, by the amount of arrests, uh, that you make. So, on the good side, our department made, uh, five hundred and thirty-four arrests total, uh, last year. We are, out of the thirty-eight departments, the eighth department in arrests. So our department is doing very, very well. I mean, they're actually out there catching the bad guys. Unfortunately, that took us from thirty-eight, thirty-two hundred dollars or so last year to eight thousand, almost nine hundred dollars this year, uh, in cost, actually. I have the cost right here.
Eight thousand, seven hundred.
Sixty-four.
And sixty-four dollars and sixty-two cents.
Had we really, uh, what this does is it cuts down on all the overtime that, because, uh, that, that it would cost the cities to have the policeman not be on standby. So they go ahead and have a, uh, a, a, a unit where they actually monitor the cases. And then they put the policeman on standby. That way, they don't have to go to court, they don't have to, they don't, they don't receive pay for it until they're actually needed for trial. So that's what the system is for. Had this system not been in place for the five hundred and thirty-four arrests that our department made, we may have very well had to have paid fifty thousand dollars in overtime.
Cost of doing business, and it makes perfect sense, Chief, I mean, yeah.
So unfortunately, we didn't get notified of what our cost was gonna be this year until after the budget.
Was approved.
And we usually pay it out of one of the line items, two thirty-seven, usually, which was, you know, between twenty-eight hundred and three thousand, three thousand, two hundred dollars. But when I saw the bill this time, it's outrageous. I mean, it's not outrageous, it's actually cheap, but what do we tell our policemen? We tell them, we want them to go out there and do what they gotta do.
They're doing their job.
They're doing their job.
You gotta take the good with the bad. They're doing their job and.
Absolutely.
We wouldn't want it any other way, sir.
So because this is not a line item for this cost and it exceeds the threshold of the manager's purview, if you would, we need to bring it to you for approval. And the only account that we can think of where we can fund it from is contingency. And that's exactly what contingency is. It's for funding things that may not be available to us during the presentation or the, and the, the budget process, but they do come up during the course of the year.
Mm-hmm. Are there any questions for the chief of the manager? I need a motion.
Motion.
I have a motion, I have a first, a second.
She need a motion.
Motion, second?
Second.
Uh, call the vote, please.
Yes, Commissioner Blanes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you. Next item.
Thank you.
Item O, nomination of members to code, of member to code enforcement board by Commissioner Blanes.
I would like to nominate Ivan Junior, Ivan Chavez Junior, Junior, to the code enforcement board. I think he would be a great addition to the board. And he is ready, willing, and able to jump in and do a great job.
Thank you. You have my blessing, sir. All in favor?
Aye. Excellent pick.
Next item.
Item P, discussion in reference to electric vehicles charging infrastructure by Vice Mayor Diaz-Padron.
Um, in, in, uh, so, by, by wa- by chance, actually, uh, maybe a week or two ago, I started having conversations with, um, a commissioner in a different city who actually works for a company in this space. And, uh, we started thinking, and I started talking to some of the companies to see what the landscape was out there. And I found out that in certain situations, and our city may be, uh, qualified for one of them, um, there is potential to start putting, uh, charging infrastructure for, at no cost to the city. Where they, they basically come in and they, um, will put in, let's say, for example, at the rec center, right? Uh, they'll put in a charging station in one of the spots, and they will cover all the costs of maintenance, of installing it, and then split any profits with the city for electric vehicles. So there's a few companies that actually do this that are actually based out of Miami, Brickall Energy, Blink Charging. Uh, Blink is a, is a very big company, but they're based out of, uh, they're based out of Miami. Um, so I was, uh, thinking, you know, we should give the manager the, uh, authority to explore, um, the possibility of these programs. Um, at no cost, you know, bringing, bringing chargers at no cost to the city, um, but actually potential profit to the city. Um, but more importantly, getting, getting this infrastructure out there, um, for residents and our visitors. Um, so that's, that was kind of my thoughts, um, to, to, to let the manager explore the landscape, see if there's opportunities and whether they are interested also. Because there has to be, you know, I'm sure they have volume requirements and stuff like that. Um, but, you know, these firms are very hungry to get their infrastructure out. Um, and because of that, our city might benefit from that. Um, because they're, they're all in a sort of a race to get their chargers out into the world. Um, so that, that was my thoughts, and I wanted to see if the commission would agree with me to let the manager explore that, um, that and, and bring it back to the board.
Vice Mayor, I, I do believe that's, that's the way of the future. Uh, it's an excellent, uh, recommendation. Um, especially if it's, there's, like you said, the programs and the one that is at no cost to us and you, you, you profit share, it makes perfect sense. And that's a service we will provide to our residents. Many of our residents do have electric vehicles and there's no way around it. That's the way of the future. So, um, excellent idea. You have my blessing. Uh, any questions for the Vice Mayor?
I have a question. Uh, when they install, because I have friends who have electric cars, when the, they comes to install, they install in the private property? Or they install in the FPL poles? Where are they installed?
So, uh, the, the idea would be that they would install it, um, basically, uh, in, on our, in our facilities, right? Our public facilities, um, where it makes sense, um, next to a current parking spot. So.
So let, 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 stop there. So in this case, the, 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 the structure of the city, I mean, when I mean the structure, I mean, the, the buildings, poles, in those things, they come and they install the charger, right? The, the city will not have any cost to that. So what they are wanting to give a service to their neighbors. Of course, the neighbors will pay them, the charge.
Yeah, and then, and then, and then they'll split that with us.
But will be no, uh, change, uh, spends, the city will have not to spend money in that.
Correct.
And they will install in the public, uh, area of the city.
Right.
Like in a parking space?
Parking space, I don't know.
It's, it's, it's a machine, it's a, have you, the Wawa Encore Way has a whole line of them. It's a station that you think.
Those gas station, they, most of them, they have that.
Right, but I'm saying that, that's the type of thing that you're looking at. It, it goes in a parking space. It's where you park your car and you plug in.
I know. It, it's a business. And the, and the building in the fifty-sixth, sixth, seventh avenue, they have, the other day I came out from CBS, and I saw in that building, they have two chargers there.
I saw that.
Today, today, most of the buildings have the chargers.
Yeah, that.
And if you buy a Tesla, they put a charger in do, in your house.
Yeah, and for example, in, in my building, there's no chargers. Um, but the, you know, the idea is, and this is again, assuming, you know, this is assuming that the companies are even interested in the amount of volume that our parking lots have, right? Or, like, for example, the idea would be at a rec, a rec center, for example, you're, you're going to your kid's baseball game.
Plug in while you're there.
You plug in while you're there.
That's a perfect spot.
Um, so that's assuming that they are even interested in the amount of volume.
Right, we're just giving the manager the go-ahead to.
Right, I, I think it's an interesting play at this point because they are, they're, they're, they're so, they're such in a race to get their, each, each company. Such in a way to get their stuff out that they, they, you know, even if the volume isn't there, they might.
Might, just for the.
Exactly.
Advertising, exposure purpose.
I see a positive thing because the, the city already have the streets done, everything is done. The only thing have to be they put a charger and you have the electric car to come.
Okay, so, Madam Manager, you have our, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I see the idea.
Go ahead.
This, this question might be ear- early on, but, um, let's just say that they, um, installed a charger in, in one parking spot. Is that parking spot going to be designated just for an electric car, uh, from, from then on? Or?
I mean, those are details, but it doesn't have to be.
Right, it doesn't have to be, but I mean, you would think it would be left open for an electric car to plug into, but I mean, yeah.
So.
Somebody else will park there, you, what are you gonna do?
Right.
Take a couple of hours. You want to charge, take a couple of hours, four hours, five hours.
Some of them have.
What I mean is, is the, 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 the parking spot will be designated by us just for electric cars? And it will be enforced by enforcement, police?
So I think it's just, uh, just common sense, you know? Like, for instance, take the, the ones at Publix. There's no monitoring that. But they're always empty unless there's an electric car parked there. I mean, I think people just know this is for an electric car charging. And just, just as an example.
Right, and, and if there's too much of a parking problem, people are gonna park anywhere anyways, so.
Right, so, yeah.
I don't think it's something that needs to be enforced by code or anything.
Yeah, and it's just one, I mean, we would start with one, you know, like.
And, and, and this is another thought or, or another question. How long is the charger? Can it be extended?
I have no idea. I don't think we have any of those details.
Let's say that a gasoline, uh, a gas, uh, gasoline, uh, vehicle parks, parks in that one parking spot.
Would it reach to the next spot? Who knows?
Electric car could come and.
Yeah, I don't know, possibly.
So I, I, I think we're getting a little ahead of ourselves.
No, I mean, I'm just thinking ahead because.
Let's, let's, let's just give the manager our blessing to, to start looking into it, and then we'll.
Get these questions.
Have answers to all those questions.
Because they, they might tell us to go, you know.
Yeah, we may not even get one, so.
Commissioner Blanes, that depends how much charge you have in your, in your battery at the moment. Sometimes you come to, yeah, sometimes you, you think you have to recharge to full the battery. So you have a half of the battery and maybe take two, three hours. Sometimes you have the battery almost empty and take you seven, seven hours. All depends the car that you have. You have a big, big Tesla, the battery is larger. All depends, you know, the car and how much, how, how much you have in, in the battery at the moment. But take a couple of hours, take a couple of hours.
So I, I, I'm glad there's, there's a little bit of excitement on this issue, so.
Yes, great, great, great suggestion.
If I may, also, I've been talking to Robert Ruano, our grant writer.
There might be grants out there, exactly.
And there is a grant. And there is a grant because we already have an allocation of seventy-four thousand dollars that we have to build a project for.
Good.
And I believe that we can outright purchase at least one unit and put it to work immediately and obtain the revenue, the city directly, without, um, having to share it with the vendor.
Well, let's, let's review all of the scenarios.
Yeah.
I think that, that may be able to, to work out better for us.
So, uh, uh, if, if I may, because I've, I did some, you know, scouting, there's two companies that are Miami-based that have these, uh, these sort of high, these, they call the hybrid programs, which are the no cost, but they also sell the units. Um, so they are called Brickle Energy.
I don't think we should be discussing the name, the companies right now, should we, Mr. Attorney? I mean, is it okay to bring up the names?
Yeah, I'm just giving names, I mean, we're not, I'm not talking to them. I'm just, place a start.
I'm always careful with the attorney over there and so on.
And, uh, and kind of scouted the field, but, you know, these two I know are Miami-based, so you can start there and kind of brings, see if you can bring back, uh, you know, scenarios.
Especially the option also include of the.
Right, whatever, you know, whatever.
Yeah, the grant, yeah.
Bring them all to us.
Um.
Well, I know that building there, in the sixty-seventh, they have two charges. So maybe one or the police can talk to the management there, the experience, how they do, how long take the cars? How they change and, you know, they, you come now, I come later, they give you a number, they give you, they call you, I don't know. But they have experience because they have two charges.
It's like the bakery, you take a ticket.
Yeah, so, yeah, if you can bring back the scenarios.
Of course.
Thank you, okay.
Awesome, thank you, thank you.
I'll look into it, yes.
Let's move on, thank you, everyone, for your input. Um, you brought up a very lively topic, I like it. Um, I like hearing from everybody, usually there's silence. Uh, next item, Madam Clerk.
Item Q, discussion in reference to seventy-fifth anniversary of city of West Miami by Mayor Rodriguez.
Yes, folks, we're almost seventy-five years old. It's around the corner, um, and I saw how wonderful our residents were and how productive our charter review was, so, um, the manager and I discussed maybe putting together a committee with all of us, you know, nominating a resident, um, so we can start talking about, that way the residents have an input as to, uh, what, if anything, you know, we can do to celebrate our seventy-fifth anniversary. Otherwise, it's just a great way to, to involve and include our residents and it works so well, charter review does such a great job. I'd like to do that, so. Hello, you two, pay attention here, this is important. For the kids, children, children, um, children, pay attention. For the, for the. Yeah, I'm talking about the children, the children, the youngsters at the table.
Her name is Candy.
I, I know the youngsters, sometimes you, you know, you, you, you go off on your own and you, you don't pay attention and you're in your own little world, but.
Her name is Candy and she's.
Yes, she was Candy, I know, I know, but I need to. Look, yes, for the next, for the next meeting, um, if you could, you know, bring a nomination so we can form a committee to start planning. Yes, you showed me up, yes, you were. Definitely, you can definitely, um, what's it called, um, multitask.
Multitask.
So yes, give a nomination for the seventy-fifth anniversary committee. Okay, wonderful, Madam Clerk, next item.
Item twelve, consent agenda items non this evening, item thirteen, good of the order.
Anybody for good of the order?
No.
Nope, all right then, um, motion adjourned.
Good night.
Meeting adjourned, good night, everyone, see everyone tomorrow.
Happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Tomorrow at the employee, uh, the.
Employee in China at twelve-thirty.
See you all there.
Happy Thanksgiving for everybody.
You're going to see them tomorrow?
See you mañana. We'll see them.
Yes, tomorrow, yes.
And Candy wants a candy?